Good morning and a Happy New Year to all of you. Thank you. It's appropriate that we pray. It's very fascinating that right now, despite the division in this nation, so many people are praying for a young man who was hurt. And I said, "That speaks to the better part of our souls." Let us pray. Oh God, who created us and gave us the fundamental laws that enable us to live together as communities of children of God, we ask that your blessings be on this community we know as Pinal County, and on those who have sought to serve the community as supervisors. We ask that your guidance and blessings be on them as they perform the tasks they have accepted, and that you be with and keep safe all those who work for the county in whatever capacity, and all those of us who work or live here, that we might assist them and make their work easier by our adherence to the rules you have given us to live by. I ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
First up will be the discussion regarding the 2022 primary and general elections with Kent Volkmer and Jerry Rol.
Chair, Vice Chair, Kent Volkmer, Pinal County Attorney. What I would like to begin with is, for the last day, day and a half, our office has worked to create a calendar of events regarding the election. So we really start with Election Day and move all the way to December 29th. What the calendar will reflect is the most notable or noteworthy things. It's not every single thing that happened, but sort of milestones, if you will. If I could ask Ms. Kennedy to bring up, so we can kind of follow it along. This has a copy, digital and paper copy, has been provided to the clerk of courts. So anybody watching along online, anybody here will have access to this very document later today. It's not privileged or anything like that. I just didn't get it completed, unfortunately, until this morning and transmitted to Ms. Kennedy and her staff. So, and really, this is designed because there's been a lot of misinformation that has been relayed publicly. There have been a number of media outlets that are writing, suggesting, and asking what Pinal knew and when we knew it, specifically with respect to the under-count that occurred. There has been information that we knew before the canvas was ever presented to this board. I will start by saying that's categorically false, and I'm going to kind of step through and walk through the process for you. Obviously, if you have questions, if something doesn't make sense, interrupt me, ask me. I do have Jerry here, our Elections Director. I may ask Ms. Rol to step up, to assist if there's an answer that I don't know. Obviously, Chris may pop in as well, because this is certainly a team effort. So we're going to begin with Election Day. Election Day was Tuesday, the 8th. By Wednesday, the 9th, we had day-of count completed. So remember the process. All the people come in on the 8th, they're filing, and they stayed through the night. It was really about 4:00 in the morning that those day-of, non-provisional ballots were completed. After that, they started doing the early ballots that were dropped off on Friday, Saturday, or Monday. So that continued for a number of days. Once those were completed, early, the 14th, I believe, the 15th somewhere, oh no, the 16th, it's already up there. Then we started the provisional ballots. Again, so we can, just real rough numbers, talk about these. There were about 109,000 early ballots in total, or about 35,000, give or take, day-of ballots, and a couple thousand, a little less than 2,000 provisional ballots. Again, those are really general numbers, but that's sort of the numbers that we're looking at. So the early vote count is completed on the 16th, the 17th, we were able to complete the provisional vote count, and then our numbers were then transmitted to this board. The information came, I believe, late. I think it was like 4:55, if memory serves me, that it was transmitted to this board. We had a pre-scheduled meeting to canvass the results on Monday, November 21st. We came in here. There was a meeting. This same sort of agenda item occurred. It was about a 24-minute meeting. I did review it this morning, just to make sure we're all on the same page. The board canvassed the results, and again, the canvassing of the results isn't the blessing of the results or anything along those lines. It's, hey, this is what was transmitted to us, this is official, we're now transmitting it to the Secretary of State's office, so election challenges can begin. Another important thing happened at that point. On the 21st, the incoming Elections Director, Ms. Rol, who's present, who's now the Elections Director, began her preparations for the recount. We knew at that point that a recount was highly, highly likely based on the numbers that had been reported publicly. We believed it was going to be at least two. So there was a recount that we anticipated. So we began doing preparation, and it looks like there's...
Supervisor Goodman, do you have a question?
Yes. Thank you. I just want to go back to the statement that you made earlier about the canvassing aspect of it, because some of the allegations and accusations that are made towards this board is that we knew of certain things and took place, and I would like you to really emphasize more what the canvassing process is, what that does, and what we did as a board.
Yes. So on the 17th, the Elections Department completed their count. Every provisional, every early, every day-of ballot that they believe they had was tabulated. That's really what the canvass is, is that tabulation. It was transmitted to this board, I believe it was transmitted actually to your clerk, Ms. Kennedy, for your review on the 21st. When you came in on the 21st, what you were saying is, hey, this is exactly what was given to us. There's no ability for you to modify those votes, there's no ability for you to erase votes, to add votes, to do anything. You had what's called a ministerial duty. Ministerial duty is there's no discretion. The language is actually "shall" in the statute. It's, I believe it's Title 16, it's in the 600s, but it is, you shall canvass the results. You shall not change any information. Looks like Chris is bringing the actual statute to me. Is it 661?
Nope, missed it by a few. 664.
There we go. Shall be entered into the official record, an election district shall show the number of ballots, shall show the number of ballots rejected, titles, the number of votes by precincts, county received. That is what, that's what the canvass is. It is a statutory document. That is what allows election challenges to occur. So if you recall, I believe, aspiring Attorney General Hamada filed a suit before the canvas, and the court actually dismissed it and said, hey, it's not ripe yet. The canvas must occur before we can actually even consider this. So the canvas is really that, this is how I described it before, and I think it's accurate. It's that line in the sand saying, okay, now our results are official. If you remember, we had a member of the public came up, and she was very frustrated, saying, why are people conceding? These numbers aren't even official. You know, they're just, we're just assuming what the media is reporting is fair and accurate. Like, that doesn't make any sense. Well, she's right. It's not until that canvas occurs. That's when it's official, that's when we know what the actual votes are. And that is what election challenges are based on. I do want to step back, though, because there is something that you brought up, Supervisor Goodman, I think is absolutely important that needs to be addressed. And that is, we did have a board meeting on the 16th. If you recall, there was a member from the public, I don't know if he's here, I believe his name was Mr. Riley, very honest man, very good man, who essentially came forward and said, hey, you know, county attorney, Recorder's Office, Elections Director, you're saying everything went perfect. Things didn't go perfect. There were a couple issues, and he specifically talked about when he ran his ID through the poll pad, his name did not populate. And he's like, did I get erased as a voter? Was I eliminated? Like, that's a real issue that we should look into. We agreed with him, it was an issue that we should look into. And essentially, he wasn't, he was not erased, because there was a mechanism in place where if you showed up, you ran your ID through that little scanner, and your ID didn't populate or said you weren't a registered voter. One, we had paper roster, and we could look at the paper roster for all registered voters. And if you weren't on the paper roster, or the people didn't use the paper roster, they could call the Recorder's Office, and the Recorder could, in fact, validate that they were a actual voter. In this case, there were a handful, actually more than a handful, there were 60-some people specifically who went, scanned their IDs, they did not populate, but they were able to cast a vote. We were able to either find them in the paper rosters or there. So we knew, when he brought that forward to our attention before you canvassed, that there was some discrepancy in what our poll pad numbers were reporting and what our actual vote count was. We did know that. But we believed it was just that difference in people whose IDs didn't scan. And we knew that those people were still being given the opportunity to vote. So we did not believe it impacted the vote totals whatsoever. It only impacted the numbers that the poll pad was reporting. That is the only inconsistency that we were aware of at that time, when we presented this information to you on the 21st and you canvassed. Now, fast forward to the 28th. On the 28th, Ms. Rol met with Mr. O'Reilly. And again, Mr. O'Reilly, I apologize for using your name, but you're the guy that really helped us. And quite frankly, he was instrumental in helping us. He met with us. We brought the vendor in. We looked at all the poll numbers. We looked at the EMS numbers. We looked at the votes cast number, and on the 28th, we discovered, I think this is more than just poll pad numbers. That's really the first time Pinal County said, uh-oh, something is not quite right. And that was Ms. Rol and her team that were looking in it, preparing for the recount. They continued to look for the next couple of days to say, hey, is this just a typographical error? Is this something that's there? By the 30th, Ms. Rol was convinced that there was an issue, and that's when she brought it to my attention. I can tell you, she called me at 3:05. We spoke for 21 minutes and 44 seconds on November 30th, and that's when we discussed it. And then we all came to the Elections Department on, and if I can go to the next page, December 1st, Thursday, December 1st. It was on December 1st, and I know that's really tough to read, I can't read it either, so I have my own kind of notes here. On December 1st, the decision was made to actually open the boxes, because this is what we discovered on the 28th. People at the polls had told us there were 600 people that came in and checked in to vote. But that's not the number of ballots that we were finding in the boxes. There's an issue with that. If a voter gets out of bed, gets dressed, goes into public, goes to a polling place, stands in line, gets a ballot, gets handed to them, they walk over, they go into a booth, the likelihood that they just, at the last second, decide that they are not going to cast that vote is very, very, very small. So when we see the number of people that checked in, and the number of pieces of paper that are in there not matching up, it became very concerning to us. And what we did is we compared that to the actual machine, what the machine told us, ballots that were ran through. And again, they were not matching up. At this point, there's a chain of custody issue, because there's a recount that we know is forthcoming. So we were very careful about what we did next, but we made the decision collectively that we have to find out how many ballots are actually in that box, because something's not right. Either the machine's wrong, the person's wrong, there's something that is not accurate. So the Elections Department, on December 1st, actually opens the boxes. We brought ESNS, who was our vendor, in, brought them in, we actually opened the boxes, and we began to rerun some of these precincts. We had identified initially four precincts that had a fairly large discrepancy. If it was one, maybe two people off, maybe that was just somebody counted right, they just didn't make enough tick marks, there could have been a lot of reasons, but we had one, for example, had 90. There was a difference of 90. That was enough to say, hey. So we ran those four different precincts, and we discovered that the numbers that we reported the first night were not identical to the numbers that we were running through now. That's when we initiated a much more in-depth investigation. We wanted to then figure out the scope of this issue. So on Friday, we started to sample the late early ballots, because at this point, we had only found and identified this being day-of ballots. There were no early ballots that we had looked at or anything else. So we decided, hey, we need to figure out the scope of how large this is. So on December 2nd, we started sampling early ballots. There were no inconsistencies detected. That following Monday, so that's Friday, the 2nd, that following Monday, there is a court hearing. And in that court hearing, which we were a party to, an order was made. And that is so small, because it quotes the order verbatim, and that's what I'm going to read to you today. So effective December 5th, and this is subsection F, Apache, Cochise, Coquenino, Hila, Graham, Greenlee, La Paz, Maricopa, Mojave, Navajo, Pima, Pinal, Santa Cruz, Yavapai, and Yuma Counties, that's all 15 of us, shall not release to the public the results of the recount, including daily vote totals, until the court has certified the results. Subsection G, all participants to the recount keep confidential any information they may acquire that would disclose the vote of any elector and destroy any notes that would disclose the same. So what happens is on December 5th, right in the midst of us discovering this, we were put under a court order that we cannot publicly disclose this information to anybody. The very next day, December 6th, the Secretary of State's Office comes and they certify our machines. We needed to have our machines recertified, again, because at this point, we don't know, is this an issue with machines? Is this an issue with people? Is this an issue with software? The Secretary of State's Office comes in, all three of our machines pass the logic and accuracy test, with ESNS, our vendor, being present, and our recount officially begins. Once we start running those numbers, we intentionally front-loaded those suspect precincts where we knew the numbers weren't quite right. We front-loaded that to run those first. It was on Wednesday, December 7th, in the late afternoon, that we made a call to the Secretary of State's Office, identifying them that, hey, we've got discrepancies. It does not appear that our numbers are going to match up. At this point, we don't know how large it is. We don't know, is it 200 votes? Is it 10,000 votes? We just know that at this point, it does not appear that they're going to match up. So we continue the recount, because we needed to know the final discrepancy.
Forgive me. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to interrupt. You say "we called." Who actually made the call to the Secretary of State, do you know?
I know I was on the phone call. I believe Ms. Rol was on the phone call. I believe Mr. Keller was on the phone call. I know I was at ACO, and I was in a parking lot, so I was on my phone outside the presence of everybody. I think there were some people, I believe those three. I believe the State Elections Director was on the call. I believe their outside counsel was on the call. And if memory serves me, I believe there was one other party on the call. I don't remember who that was.
Okay.
And again, that would have been afternoon to late afternoon, somewhere in that timeframe. I could get the exact time. So we continue doing our recount. On Friday, the 9th, that is when Mr. Hamada files his election contest in Mojave County. On the 12th, our recount is continuing. Hamada files his petition to inspect ballots. We continue recounting until the 16th. The 16th, we have our preliminary full recount completed. However, after seeing the discrepancy there, compared to our initial canvas, we asked the Elections Director, at this time it's Ms. Rol, to look at things and to say, hey, are you confident in these numbers? Ms. Rol is not entirely confident that those numbers were going to be accurate, so the decision was made, let's run it a third time. Our only concern, I should clarify, is only the day-of election ballots. So on the 16th, the decision was made by our Elections Director, you know what, we're going to run all those day-of ballots again. There's only 35,000. We can run them again. We need to make darn sure whatever our numbers are, are correct, that we give to the Secretary of State's Office on the 22nd. So the 16th, the 17th, through the weekend, excuse me, it wasn't until the 20th that the full recount occurred. I apologize. It was on the 20th, the Secretary of State's Office files the motion for recount. Remember, we had until the 22nd to get our numbers in. We did have a conversation with the Secretary of State's Office. We told them we thought we would be able to get those in by the 22nd, we would be able to get them in the morning of the 22nd, meeting their deadline. The Secretary of State's Office, on the 20th, chose to file a motion to continue to say, hey, we don't want you to be rushed getting the answers right are more important than getting them quickly. So a motion was filed by the Secretary of State's Office and their counsel to push out to December 29th, that number. We continued to do the recount. On the 21st, Ms. Rol authored a four-page discrepancy report. I'm going to ask her to step up once I'm done here, and she's going to kind of talk about it, because we've done the investigation. We know where the mistakes are. We know where the errors occurred, and she's going to kind of go through those with you as soon as I'm done. On the 22nd, in the morning, we did disclose our full recount numbers that included the third recount of day-of election ballots to the Secretary of State's Office. On Friday, the 23rd, there is an evidentiary hearing in Mojave County regarding Hamada's lawsuit. At that time, the lawsuit was dismissed. Please note, we are still under this other court order that we cannot discuss the updates, the counts, or anything along those lines. The Christmas holiday goes through, the 27th, the 28th, the 29th comes, which is when the court scheduled that hearing. On December 29th, the court...
Mr. Chairman, may I interject a question? Just to, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify, we were prohibited from disclosing the counts, but we were not prohibited from disclosing errors?
I believe that would be an overly technical. That is not, that is not the intention of the court's order. The court's order mirrors statute. The statute is, we are not allowed to publicly discuss what's going on. It is a cone of silence would be a very kind of generic term for it. So that is not, you don't say, well, technically, that's what it said, but we're going to go ahead and do this. It is very clear, the intent is, when you read the entirety of the order, it's a five-page order, it is absolute radio silence. You don't discuss anything. In fact, the Secretary of State's Office was not even willing to confirm with us or to discuss with us if we were consistent with everybody else in our mistakes. Now, again, realize that our counties never, well, in recent history, our county has not been involved in a recount. The state hasn't done a statewide recount ever, 20-plus years. The recounts have always been in congressional races or smaller races, not a statewide recount. So we knew that we were off, but we didn't know the magnitude that we were off. We didn't have a frame of reference. When we reached out to Secretary of State's Office, they couldn't, under the court's order of their interpretation, they said, we can't even let you know what other counties are. We can't even let you know if you're in the ballpark, if you're way worse or way less. It is an absolute radio silence. So I would disagree with the assertion that we were allowed to say, hey, we've got errors and to make that public. That would have been in violation of the court's order.
So the fact that Mr. Kavanaugh felt obligated to ask that, perhaps we weren't instructed enough that we was total, so, just in the future, so, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We did ask that publicly to Chris Keller in a previous meeting, and we got advice that I recall was contradictory to what Mr. Volkmer just said. Go ahead.
All right. Mr. Goodman?
And I disagree with both of you, because we've had meetings with Mr. Volkmer, and in those discussions, we were told that, and from what I feel, is that this is not to be discussed at any point or level. Now, I didn't ask those specific questions that you're asking right now, and maybe that's our fault for not asking those specifically, but I walked out of those meetings thinking that we, this is absolute, not open until the right time to put this out there. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
And if I may, I want to concur with Supervisor Goodman. I was like, this is sealed, this is no, no discussion, is how I interpreted the instructions from Mark County Attorney's Office. Just want to put that out there.
And I, Mr. Chair? And I would concur with Supervisor Miller and Goodman.
Thank you.
But to your point, because of that, because you just heard it right here, the discrepancy between the five of us, I think going forward with some of these issues and things that happen, and hopefully, they don't, hopefully, we can get this crap together, because all it does is it creates more distrust and everything else to the public, and that's one of the reasons why we're trying to be open and transparent in this. And so that's the part of, you know, the very fact that Supervisor Kavanaugh just asked the question, you know, a point of certain things, I'm not sure why anybody doesn't call and verify with our county attorney what that should be. I think even before any information's even expressed out there, we should be going to our county attorney, that's what he is, and asking, so what does this exactly say? And I do not remember, and that, and I would like to see those minutes, if you can find those minutes, to where, what Supervisor Kavanaugh, because that's not the impression I got either. But I'd like to see that.
So I'm going to move forward. I believe at this point, we provide on Thursday, December 22nd, our full recount numbers prior to Secretary of State's Office. Our investigation continues as to the discrepancies, and then on Thursday, December 29th, there's a court hearing that starts a little bit late, scheduled for 10. There were some issues about whether people were going to be able to appear telephonically, whether they're going to build a remote in, whether it's going to be a virtual option. It ends up starting, I believe, maybe 20 minutes late. It was a very short meeting. It was fairly nondescript. It was perfunctory is how I would really describe it, at which the court ultimately accepts the canvas, declares the two winners, and concludes the case in its entirety. At that point, the court order prohibiting us discussing the issues was no longer valid. The county quickly met. I know county manager was on the phone with us. I know Ms. Rol, myself, and we very quickly gathered together information that subsequently was published within about two hours of that court hearing concluding, with Ms. Rol's detailed analysis of the mistakes that occurred. That information, I believe, is still available on the Elections Department webpage. I know Ms. Rol's going to talk about that here shortly, but all that information, again, within a couple hours, was there. It was not flattering to Pinal County. I'm not going to make any two bones about it. I told you on the 21st that we were 99.99% right. We weren't. We were 99.7% right. 99.7%, while good, is not good enough. I think our Elections Department, everybody in this county, I think this board would agree, and we are working diligently to figure out how we can make sure that it's 99.9999%, not 99.7%. Some of the things that we have identified as a gap, if you will, we did a very good job of having a list of all of our milestones. On this date, this needs to be done. On this date, this needs to be done, and Supervisor McClure did a very good job of kind of explaining this to a group that I was with. We had these milestones that needed to occur, but what we didn't have is the procedures to address those milestones. And what had happened is, we don't have an internal elections procedural manual. There is not a consistent ability for somebody to pick up a book, to look at it, go through and say, okay, when this happens, this is how we do it. This is the next step. Did we do this? Check off. Because there were some mistakes that were made. There were errors that could have been caught before the recount if we had had a checklist in place. Problem is, we had a new team that came in. We had almost entirely new Elections Director. We had lost a lot of our institutional knowledge. In order to ensure that we don't ever lose institutional knowledge again, the generation of a procedural, internal procedural manual is, I think, absolutely vital and something that we are actively working on. I do have one bit of somewhat, I think, good news that I would like to share with the board. It's going to sound bad at first, so bear with me, but Mr. Hamada has filed a motion to reconsider. It's about 645 pages long in his election suit that was declined, or that was dismissed. And in it, he is actually somewhat complimentary to Pinal County. Now, obviously, they acknowledge that we screwed up, we made mistakes. But I'm going to read a couple select parts. It's actually on page 12. So this is, again, I'm reading this verbatim from the motion that was filed by Mr. Hamada's attorney. Quote, "Indeed, Pinal County set the best practice for identifying and fully analyzing potential discrepancies. When confronted with questions about the total number of votes and possible variance, Pinal County, quote, 'decided to open up the Lock Precinct 01 ballot box,' end quote. Upon examination, it appeared to contain more ballot cards than tabulated on Election Day, and a hand count revealed 600 ballot counts. Upon completing this process whereby officials physically counted the number of ballots contained in the precinct, Pinal County appears to have caught and resolved a major discrepancy." It goes down a little bit further. There's one portion where the county, talking about Pinal County, "The county cracked open the box, physically counted ballots to confirm an error occurred, and then corrected discrepancy with admirable candor." What I can tell you is, we made mistakes. There's no two ways about it. Fortunately, it did not result in anybody's election being changed, but what I can tell you is, at the end of the day, we got the numbers right. It took us a second try and a third try, quite frankly, with the day-of ballots. We have very thoroughly examined why this happened, and we're taking every step we can to ensure that it does not happen again. But at the end of the day, the one thing that you should be proud of is, our Elections Department didn't shy away from this. We didn't hide, we didn't lie, we didn't manipulate, we didn't pencil-whip anything. We owned up to our mistakes, we found out why they were there, we reported them to you with candor, and we're here today to answer any questions that you have. And with that, that concludes my report. Again, I would like Ms. Rol to have an opportunity to come up. Yes, I would like, I think that's all I have unless there's further questions, but I would like Ms. Rol to come up and kind of explain what her investigation uncovered.
Stand by, maybe we will, but let's hear from Ms. Rol.
So, how about if I just ask if you have any questions, and I'll try to answer them? Or would you like me to go through the memorandum piece by piece, how the investigation unfolded? Your choice.
I don't see any questions, so, Mr. Kavanaugh does.
So, at some point, did ENS and S come in and install new software or update software?
No. No. How about if we go through the memo and see?
Well, no, no, let me ask my questions.
Okay.
So you, you're telling me they did not update or in any way the software? Do you recall talking about the software update and the settings were reset or something like that, the defaults were reset?
So let's talk about that piece of, of how the tabulating machines are, how they are set up for tabulating an election. So what, what happens is you create an election, and, and E S and S creates the election, and that tells the machine what races are on the ballot, who's running, and what propositions. So that's, that's programming the election. It's not an update to the software. It is, it is creating the election. That election is loaded onto each machine after they are first qualified. One of the things that we did not realize was when we went through the recount, you programmed a recount election for the same buckets that you had for, for the general election, early ballot, Election Day ballots, and provisional ballots. So you have a new stick that's the recount program, and so that program only counted the statewide races. It only programmed for those two races to be counted on any ballots that were run through the machine. When you qualify the machine and then load in the recount election, what we were unaware of was that the sort settings that had been set on those machines for all of the general election count were, were reset to their default mode. So when we started counting Election Day votes, it, the, so I, I got to take you back. When we loaded Election Day for the general, after we had early voting loaded on the tabulators, the default settings were, the settings, the sort settings were set to default, and so on Election Day, when they were counting polling place ballots, those were not being sorted or outstacked for unclear marks. The default setting is unreadable and invalid ballots. Those are the only two that, that are hardwired. You cannot move those to different processing bins. So on Election Day, there were a number of races being counted. So if you had an unclear mark on the race that we were recounting, it processed that ballot. It did not outstack it for an unreadable or an unclear mark for adjudication. When we loaded the recount on, we changed our sort settings. We set our sort settings because we had E S and S there with the recount sticks. When they loaded it on, they said, "What do you want your sort settings at?" We set our sort settings as we had it set for early ballot, early voting. And so on the recount, it was outstacking those un, those unclear mark, those unclear marks, which are the check marks and the Xs. That's where we came up with part of our discrepancy.
Okay. And did you have just one phone call with Cory Lor, the group caller, or were there other calls?
I think Cory was calling in during the recount probably once or twice, you know, I think beyond the group call on the 7th, then I think she probably checked in with us again as we got closer and through the recount to see where we were.
Okay.
What our status was.
Did she give you advice when you told her errors or commentary when you, when you noticed the errors?
No.
She didn't tell you not to worry about it?
Overall, the only, the only one that I asked her about was when we started the recount on the Election Day ballots, and we were getting ballots that were coming out that in, I thought should have already been outstacked during the count on, during the general election. So why are these ballots coming out now on a recount for an unclear mark? Those should have come out on Election Night when they were counting them. So, you know, these-
Did she say not to worry about it?
She did.
And, and just to back up a second, you became Elections Director on, what was it, December? I didn't recall the date. Was it the 20th?
I believe it was on the 5th.
And you were an employee of the County Attorney's Office until that time?
Correct.
And machine number two, that was not used during the recount, is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and that was because there was, it was double feeding and some other problems with that machine? You realized there was a problem?
We did not know what the discrepancy, what was leading to the discrepancy that we were seeing in the precincts that we initially investigated. And so I, I made two decisions. One was to have staff do the recount to handle the ballots rather than bring back the board that had counted Election Night ballots, and I only had enough staff to efficiently and effectively use two machines. And since I wasn't sure where our issue was, I did not use two for the recount.
Okay, and Scott and Gabe were the people from the, two of the names from E S and S who came to help, is that right?
No.
What were, there were-
E S and S on Election Night had a fellow by the name of Mark with us, and then for the LNA on the 6th with the SOS on December 6th, that was Damon Hampton.
Okay. Then the, the, can you recall the first names of the persons from, were there two people from S and S or just one?
The only other-
Regular guy that didn't show up or was doing something else, and then you had the-
Damon Hampton is, is our account, you know, our account manager, and so usually we have Damon. Damon was employed with the Elections Department. I think he left in 2016, and he went to E S and S.
Okay.
So Damon usually is with us or is with the Elections Department when we, on Election Night, for, when, when we're actively using their equipment and, and their stuff. I mean, he's kind of an advisor. So he was in Indiana, and we had Mark.
Okay.
He wasn't with us during Election Night.
Okay, we touched on poll pads. Voter registration and names, that's not part of the Elections Department. That's part of the Recorder's Office, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the, so the names get loaded up to the poll pads by, by the Recorder's Office?
No.
Oh, can you explain that?
Mr. Chair, if I might, and I, and I, you're using names that I don't know. For instance, Cory, is it Cory Lor, Lor, who is she?
She is the state, she was the State Elections Director.
Okay, I, I, there's probably a lot of people in the audience or even our constituents that don't even know some of these names of people we're talking about, and it would be nice to know who they are and what departments they represent in the discussion here, so thank you.
Forgive me, I, I-
I appreciate that.
I thought we had-
I don't remember everything.
A broader knowledge, so my apologies.
Well, it's that senior age that I have, and so I, I don't remember everything, so I apologize.
No problem. So the Recorder's Office is, Dana Lewis is the recorder, right?
Correct.
And so we talked, we were just talking about names loading up into the poll pads, and names and election data, that's the bailiwick of the Recorder's Office, but the poll pads, who loads the poll pads and tell us about how that happened?
So the poll pads came from a company called Know Inc., and they are affiliated with another company called Avid, and Avid is the statewide voter database that the Secretary of State maintains. So they, they keep all of the voters and their registration information, and it's, a lot of it comes from the Department of Motor Vehicles. They keep all of that in a database. What happens is that the poll pads, a human being takes the poll pads, 250 of them, and goes in and creates a download from Avid into the poll pads, and that's done by an employee from Elections, not from the Recorder's Office. And so in our case, there's a, and I think all poll pads are probably the same. In our case, apparently, there was a box that needed to be marked that would download the driver's license information into the poll pad. We spent three days downloading voters into poll pads because we were, we have a narrow band of internet, and if you try to do more than five poll pads at a time, you, they crash. It goes too slow. So we couldn't hook up all 250 and download. In any event, over the course of three days, we downloaded the information from Avid into the poll pads. We did not download the driver's license information, and the poll pad relies on the driver's license. It has a scanner. You come up with your driver's license, you put it in, it takes a shot of it, and says, "You are a voter," spits out a, a little receipt that you can then take to the judge's table and get a ballot.
And just, just for clarification, you and I have kind of discussed all this, and you, and Ms. Roll, you understand, these questions, we know the answers to. This exchange is for the benefit of the public, and so, just so, so nothing nefarious happened in the Elections Department, correct?
Not that I'm aware of.
And so-
I, I found absolutely no evidence.
But we, but there were, there were issues with the canvas in your report, and reporters have called, and I refer them to your report, that you mentioned the data, the count, it sounded like it was premature. We should have done some auditing of the canvas before it was brought to the board. When did you start noticing those issues?
So Mr. Volker referred to a voter who contacted our office and said, "Why did I, why wasn't, why didn't my license scan at the polling place?" On the 15th of November is when I responded back to him and said, "This is what I'm finding out. I talked to the polling inspector. I've talked to Know Inc. This is kind of what they're saying. We're still investigating." When I looked at that precinct, after the canvas was done, the precinct this voter came from, pulling out their physical data, looking at it, it was like, boof, there were more than just this one fellow whose driver's license didn't scan. There are probably close to 20 individuals who voted in that precinct. So there was a discrepancy between the number of poll pad check-ins, because these folks weren't checked in, and the number of ballots that were cast in that precinct. That began part of the question of how, what, what can I, how can I rely on these poll pad numbers? What is the real issue? And then when you laid them out against the canvas numbers, it became clear, and, and we started, I started with Precinct 1 and talked to that precinct, that polling place inspector, and she described her process. I got out all of their poll pad receipts. I made sure that they didn't have any duplicates, that there, that there was no canceled check-ins or something else had occurred, because the discrepancy was 210 votes cast, and we had 300 ballots that had been, or 300-plus ballots had been had, and 300 ballots had been handed out, plus we had poll pad check-ins of 300. So that was, hmm.
Okay, and then in the third paragraph of your recount discrepancy report, you said that workers failed to take additional steps to make sure provisional ballots were properly segregated. Have you found any documentation or evidence that election, that the election workers were trained to take additional steps to make sure the ballots were properly segregated?
The, the ballots that we did not properly segregate were the write-ins from the provisionals. So there were, I believe, 24 write-in ballots. When we counted the provisionals on the 17th of November, those write-ins, those are, those are outstacked, they're processed, but because they have a write-in, they go to the second bin, the second tray, and those are pulled out and given to a write-in board, so you can record if there are any valid write-ins. When that process was done, those were unfortunately put into a box with the early ballot write-ins, because we had four boxes of early ballot write-ins from, I mean, write-ins from early ballots. So they weren't kept in the box with the provisionals or, or banded and labeled.
I'm confident you're going to fix that.
I am.
I'm very happy you're there.
Thank you.
And on page 2 of your report, you notice that the, in your report, it says, "The canvas was filed prior to taking an adequate opportunity to investigate anomalies," and they were known in, these anomalies were known inside the Elections Department prior to the canvas. Who made the decision to sort of withhold this information from the Board of Supervisors prior to the canvas? What, was there a decision-making process that you were aware of?
I'm, I had no part in any decision-making process for the, doing the canvas or when the canvas was brought to the board. So I, I believe that obviously on the 15th and of November and the 16th, I'm corresponding with the voter who had issues with the poll pads, and we are beginning to see issues, and certainly Ms. Ross was made aware of those issues.
Okay, and then there was an attorney working within the Elections Department. I just lost my place here. His name is, was it Scott Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, is that, was that an employee of the Elections Department, or is that a county attorney?
He was on assignment from the County Attorney's Office.
Well, I really appreciate the fact that you're working hard to fix the errors and go through process, and I think you're, I think next time, we'll have a solid election. When we talk about errors, there was machine errors, human errors, and process errors. In your experience, have you identified other management errors that would have helped to make this election go smoother?
You know, again, I believe that the canvas was done prematurely. I think we had enough to have raised some, you know, to have raised a few questions, and we should have taken more steps before we canvassed. We certainly had time. On the 17th, as, as Mr. Volker told you on, of November, that was the, it was just within a half hour or so after completing the count of the provisional ballots, which were only 600, by the way, that we were filing, Virginia was pulling the canvas off of the election software and sending it to the Board of Supervisors. So there was no, no opportunity was taken to really look at any of those numbers carefully. The last early ballots were, were counted on the 16th.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you and, and thank you for answering the questions completely and digging into this, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. And so you know, I believe the most important thing that we can do and what is top priority for me is building that procedure manual. We, we must have a procedure to each of these processes, starting from the very beginning, and people need to, to understand exactly how to do it, which boxes to check, what are the machines doing. We have to have a full understanding of everything that we work with, and that's what we will strive for. Any other questions?
No. Did you, is that everything you wanted to present?
I believe so.
Okay. Okay. So I want to make a short statement, and of course, I can't speak for everyone up here, but yes, it was 99.9% accuracy, but every vote got counted, and we continue to strive for that, and we will continue to be transparent. I wish the other counties would as well. It seems like they go fighting every step of the way. Just get it all out there, and it'll go away, is the way I look at it, and we do get contact. I, I have over 1,000 emails from some, I don't know where they're coming from, asking for a recount in Maricopa County. We're not Maricopa County. We can't do anything about that. I don't know why we're included in on that, but we do appreciate the transparency, and I think as long as we do that, we will, it'll be looked like, you know, how it should be, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, call to the public. We all know how that works. Just grabbing my stuff. Remember, you have red and green lights there. When it gets to be a red light, it's time to go. So we're going to have the names, and we need basically your address of where you're from. Barry McCain.
Happy New Years, everyone. My name is Barry McCain. But good morning, Chairman Searcy, Board of Supervisors, staff, and friends. My name is Barry McCain from Maricopa. I'm honored to be here and thankful that we've gotten through this Christmas holidays. Costs a lot of lives. President, if we don't have empathy for others, what good are we? President Truman once said, "America was built on courage, imagination, unbreakable determination to do the job at hand." We've had in the past civil leaders special because they were determined to push those in higher office to listen to uncomfortable- to listen to uncomfortable truth, and they've cared about those that are overlooked or sometimes written off. Yet, their efforts and outcome were worth the sacrifice, because democracy is worth fighting for and worth saving. This upcoming Arizona Legislative Session will be each tasked to sacrifice for the whole in order to give Americans and Arizonans a better quality of life. We must hold those in higher office accountable for the Arizona economy. We must produce action, because, as it turns out, action is the antidote for despair. It's been said that if your vote is, is not heard, if your voice is not heard or counted, if your community is not represented, then your will, at minimum, is less likely to realize the opportunities that this country make possible. I wish to say the true promise to Arizona was not perfection, but constant improvement. We must, this must be our goal in the upcoming Arizona Legislative Session, because we must never accept committee, comedy, spelled C-O-M-I-T-Y, and comfort over confrontation of fairness.
Vicky McLaughlin.
No, I do not need to speak today. I think my questions were covered.
Thank you. Pete Saban.
Good morning, Chairman Searcy and Supervisors. Pete Saban, Unincorporated Morana. A lot of my questions, I think, were answered as well. I still have a couple. I understand and appreciate the position you guys are in, so, I sympathize. It's not, not easy, and I do appreciate your willingness to be up here and be open and talk about the election. As Chairman Searcy said, I wish the other counties were as transparent and forthcoming about stuff. I guess my first question is with regard to the gag order, if you want to call it that, not to discuss the election and the recount. I don't believe that would include communication with Judge Jansen in Mojave County or with Judge Thomason in Maricopa with regard to Abe Hamade's lawsuits. That could have been relayed back channel. There are discrepancies, we're looking into them. Maybe that lawsuit wouldn't have been dismissed out of hand, which, you know, like it or not, affects us here in Maricopa, or in Panal, because of, you know, the outcome of the election. The other question, I guess, is, and it's really even a statement, I guess, is, we need to direct resources to the Elections Department, to the Recorder's Office, to make sure that things like this don't happen again. The primary had problems, and now the generals had problems. A T-1 line, adequate internet speed, not very expensive, $100, $150 a month. So, this five license uploaded at a time thing would go away. So, I believe we need to direct adequate resources to ensure that this doesn't happen again. And I think there needs to be a little bit more transparency about early ballots versus day-of versus provisional, and where all the errors are. And there's been a lot of discussion, but if in-person voting was only 35,000-ish, then 507 votes short is actually 1.45%, not 0.3%. So, that's a huge error. These machines are, you know, I called the Elections Department, and I was unable to get a records request in in time to have the information for this meeting, but most of those election machines, tabulation machines are like 0.01% accurate. So, to have even 0.3% or 1.45% is just unacceptable. We wouldn't tolerate this with our money and banks if it was being counted that, with that level of accuracy. And we shouldn't allow that with our, with our vote, which arguably is much more important to a republic, not a democracy. Democracy is mob rule, this is a republic, and I think we need to get, need to get this right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Could I, could I give direction to our staff? There's some questions and things that he had in the beginning, one of his first discussion, or his first question, if you could address that. And then, maybe along that line, we, we have, I know we're working on trying to improve our systems and everything else, but make that part of one of our work sessions, is we have some open discussions on what we're going to do. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
John Orton.
John Orton, I live in the unincorporated area of Eloy. As our county attorney stated, there were problems. My question to you is, your $25,000 bonus to Virginia Ross was based upon no problems. So, I hope you direct the county attorney to do a clawback on that $25,000 that you paid for an air-free election. Thank you.
Mary Rodriguez.
Good morning, Mary Rodriguez from Casa Grande. Just as a citizen sitting here watching this, it looks like such a scramble. Thank you for answering a lot of questions, but there are so many things that are just kind of glossed over. One, recount, is that totally a machine recount? Or did that include actually opening the boxes and counting the paper? That was not made clear. A machine recount alone is not enough in this case. The boxes need to be opened, and the paper needs to be looked at. And when there's 2%, recount required by statute or, that's the, every election, that's what gets done, a 2%. Panal County has 109 to 112 precincts. So, in this particular Abe Hamade's recount and investigation, they found 394 votes. Was that just out of this 2%? That needs to be expanded. They found so much discrepancy to just look at two precincts, which is 2% of the 112. That's not enough. It needs to be expanded, and it does not instill confidence in the citizenry when that's what we're looking at here. And there's all kinds of numbers flying around, and, you know, when you say that we will have another, when Supervisor Kavanaugh said we will have a better election next time. Well, now, we have problems with 2018. We had huge problems with the primary, and now we have this. What makes us feel like we will have a better election next time? I do not have confidence. This isn't done, this can't be done, with just 2% being looked at and almost 400 votes being found. You don't fail to mention that only 24 provisional ballots were found in error. People scramble over 24. This is 394 ballots, including the ones that went for the opponent, which was another 115 or so. So, not enough. You see how technical it gets when Elections Director Rol comes up and explains how complicated this is. It's complicated. It's not an easy thing, especially when you involve machines. It certainly makes paper ballots so much more logical if you had to count paper ballots at each precinct.
There's your red light.
And come up with a total, you'd have to add up 112 numbers. Compare that to the description that Elections Director Rol was giving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ali Miller.
Good morning, my name is Ali Miller. I live in Pima County. I was a former supervisor in Pima County for eight years. And listening this morning, it's even more scary than I originally thought. It sounds like there were all kinds of different errors than what I have been reading about. You had a disastrous primary election, and then you fired the Elections Director and hired your former Panal County Recorder for $175,000 plus $25,000. I used to rail about Chuck Huckleberry in Pima County, $400,000 plus his benefits. This is annualized to $600,000. And I don't know how anybody justifies that. I don't know what you're paying your Elections Director now, but that is a lot of money. And I totally agree with the lady that said you should clawback that $25,000, because this was not, by any account I heard here this morning, a smooth election. And from what I have seen in the news media, in the Arizona Daily and Independent, I saw a report that the officials, and this gentleman here, Supervisor Kavanaugh, asked the question. And I really appreciate your questions, because it clarifies a lot. I wish a lot of you had a lot more questions. That these problems were known about prior to certification, and then the Elections Director Rol just confirmed that. And actually, you certified a week ahead of the deadline, so you had plenty of time. And I assume you all were notified, if you weren't. I do hope some heads are rolling. You should have been notified. And the fact that if any of you knew about this and you certified an election, that was a certification of a fraudulent election. Those numbers were not correct, and if you knew they weren't correct and you certified, that is called fraud. I did not certify, I voted no on the certification in 2020 in Pima County because of the issue with fully American citizens being given federal-only ballots. I just have a few questions. Does anyone think certifying incorrect numbers is okay? Did your attorney, why didn't your attorney, who is an officer of the court, notify the courts of these discrepancies? I know it is the duty of the Secretary of State to report that, she didn't. And I think everyone was watching that. Did anyone, certifying the elections, you know, Abe Hamade was in court, we knew this was a big issue. And when you say it's not a big issue, he's only off by 280 votes. I think this lady suggested a hand recount of the whole county. I think that is in order, given all of the issues identified here this morning. Thank you very much.
Wouldn't anyone else like to speak that did not hand in a form? All right, we will move on to...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I believe the rules allow us to reopen an issue. I wonder if we could reopen the elections issue for five minutes? And would that require a motion? It was a...
What do you mean, the election issue?
Well, the elections, the first item. Item one, just the elections discussion.
And you think it's appropriate to do it now, rather than, rather than at a...
Yes, sir.
I had my ringer off, I really did. There it is. I don't see any, I guess so, yes. So, yeah, we will go back to item one, rather than do it at another time.
Thank you, and may I make comment, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
So, Mr. Goodman asked about the former discussion, and my question was, on verbatim, on December 7th, Kent Volkman informed the Board that there is a prohibition regarding revealing the count and concerning recount, and we're not to disclose the vote to a despoty determined. And I want to make, I want to make it clear with the county attorney's office, the judge's order does not prohibit us from talking about problem inside the election, other issues or processes, is that correct? And Mr. Keller's response was correct. So, forgive me if I mischaracterize that. That was the question, and that was the answer. So, it was my question, and his answer was to clarify that. There's another issue that I'm concerned about, and that is that we more fully explain, Mr. Chairman, to the public, perhaps in writing, in summary, how the vote occurred, how many votes were cast, how they were counted, machine counts, so they have it in writing, and, and very clear. So, those, just the couple of things I wanted to, to state, and I appreciate you opening the item up.
Anyone else? Okay, then we will move on to County Manager's Report.
Thank you, good morning, Mr. Chairman. We do have a video of our Panal Regional Park that's opening. We have a ribbon cutting here on January 11th. But I'd also like to mention that we were able to obtain a federal grant for about $14 million to build. For those that are familiar, this Peralta Regional Park is up, up against the Superstition Mountain, just on the north side of Peralta Canyon. And there's an elementary school there that you pass up, and then you go on to a graded dirt road. So, we were able to obtain a federal grant to pave that road all the way to our regional park, and then beyond that, all the way to the federal trailhead. So, for those that are familiar, the federal trailheads are very popular, very beautiful back there. We maintain and own a trailhead, Lost Gold Mine Trail, east side of that trail. And then, there's a Wave Cave Trail as well, that is pretty popular, that people go out to. So, paving this road is going to be a great thing for a lot of the people that like to go out there and enjoy that recreation. And it should, design should be done in '23, as well as the acquisition from state land for the rideaway. And then, we'll be starting construction probably late '24 on that road. I don't know, Tasha, if you could queue up that video for us?
And then, what time is the ribbon cutting, in the morning? I've been asked that, and I don't know.
I'll have to look back. I think it's 10 o'clock, but let me, let me confirm. While the video's going, I'll confirm that, and I'll give you the time.
All right, thanks.
And also, just for the public, that this is, this is the first park of this type for us as a county. And one of the things we like to do is, when we open, we get the experience of the citizens and the users. We like to get feedback from them, so please, we use that feedback, whether it's changing our fee structure, whether we end up offering something like a seasonal fee or an annual. We don't have that yet, but we're waiting to see what the feedback and the turnout is from, from the people that want to come use and enjoy this park.
So excited, we're finally out here at Peralta Regional Park. And we're going to do this little video to give some information of what is out here exactly. 500 acres, there are 18 Ramadas, two of which are these big community Ramadas, and they're reservable. There's barbecues here, there's 31 campsites, and it's 500 acres. People don't realize how big this is. There's meandering roads through it all, and it's going to take more than one trip to come out here and enjoy it all. You could do nature walks, stargazing, there's a special section just for that. So, we're really excited about it, and it's all in the shadows of the majestic Superstition Mountains. On a personal note, I'm so privileged to be the supervisor for District 5. We've got the Goldfield Ghost Town, we've got the Arboretum, we've got Lost Dutchman State Park, we've got the Renaissance Festival, Country Thunder, and now, Peralta Regional Park. And that's all in District 5, so, excuse me, but I'm a little bit proud of that. I don't want to make the other parts of the county jealous, but come out here and enjoy Panal County. This is the North Panal County, and we're so proud of it. And remember, the ribbon cutting is January 11th. Everyone's looking forward to that, and the public can then come out and enjoy. You can actually camp that night at January 11th, so, really looking forward to it. All of it right here, the base of the Superstition Mountains.
Yep, 10 o'clock, Chairman. Yes, the ribbon cutting.
Kevin Johnson does an awesome job on all of the videos that he does. What's that?
We're doing credits now?
Yeah.
Who directed?
Is that it?
That is, thank you.
All right, thank you. Purchasing Division Report, Tiara.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and members of the Board. I'm Tiara Peterson, Purchasing Manager, Panal County, and this is your purchasing report for January 4th, 2023. First, the Board is requested to approve the following contract awards. RFP 203026 for Public Defense Services Office Attorney Services. We recommend that the law offices of Adam Jones be awarded... We recommend that the law offices of Adam Jones be awarded a contract beginning January 4th, 2023, to run concurrent with the current contract term that expires on June 30th, 2023. This contract is used by the Public Defense Services Office. ROQ 233424, Architect for New Elections Building. We recommend Swan Architects, Inc. be awarded a contract, and this contract will be used by the Facilities Department. And then finally, the board is requested to approve the following cooperative purchases. Requisition 166262 with Arcatis U.S. Inc. in the amount of $413,411.92 for construction management services for the elections and early voting building. This will be used by the Facilities Department. PO number 248150 with Danson Construction LLC in the amount of $1,018,546 for the Public Health Vector Lab Edition Project, also used by the Facilities Department. And PO 248793 with DocuLink's Operations LLC in the amount of $132,678 for document preparation used by the Clerk of the Superior Court. And that concludes your purchasing division report for January 4th, 2023.
Does anyone have any questions? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the purchasing division report as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Consent agenda items, all items indicated by an asterisk will be a single vote unless someone wants to pull anything. Would anyone like to pull anything from this agenda? If not, I will ask for a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, oh, forgive me. No, nothing pulled.
I move we approve the consent items as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's unanimous as well. And now is the time where I recess this meeting and we go into flood control. And does anyone have any questions on the flood control agenda? And I will ask for a motion on that consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the flood control agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. We'll recess that and go to the library board in the same way. Is there any questions on the library district? If not, I'll ask for a motion on that agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the consent items for the library district as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. We'll then go into the health department. Does anyone have any questions on that agenda? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the health department consent, or the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that one's unanimous as well. Item number nine. Okay, I'll go back into session of the board meeting. And we will have, Chris Keller will step out. Andrew McGuire will take over these hearings. And this is one of those cases where the board is acting as a quasi-judicial board. Please proceed.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board, county manager. My name is Craig Cameron. I'm the deputy county attorney, and I'm presenting regarding the McMinn matter. This has been continued from a previous date. You had sought additional information of providing the property owners additional opportunity to make changes. And Chairman, if I could, can I approach the, the board?
Sure.
Members of the supervisors and chairman, I recognize that the hearing office rules are very specific, that no additional new evidence shall be provided. However, we got to this hearing today based upon the board's allowance for additional actions to be taken. These photographs were taken this morning. Again, I would emphasize, and I would reassert, I would request that the finding of the hearing office, that there are violations on this property, the three violations that accrued, be affirmed. The fine that was imposed at the hearing office to be affirmed, and allow us to proceed to the Superior Court to enforce the fines and whatever other remedial measures may be needed. Now, identified, you see in one of these pictures, we have an individual out there. They are continuing to work on it. We may not need to receive equitable relief to allow a clean and lean type process to take place if they complete their cleaning. But as of today, and in the months since the last hearing, the cleanup is not completed. We still have violations. Therefore, I request that we affirm the hearing office decision and allow us to go forward to Superior Court. Thank you.
Was, was it even worse than this at one time?
Yes.
So, so they have made some progress, but this is still obviously not very nice.
And Chairman, by all means, we are grateful that they have made efforts, and we want to encourage that. But what by their efforts would ultimately mean is that if we do a clean and lean, the lean on the property would not be as stiff as it is now or would be with, you know, simply the $2,250, or $2,250 a fine that was imposed.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Cameron, good morning. To be clear, this is, this is coming back to us. We continued from September 28th of last year. To get, or September, I'm sorry, to get to that point, it had already been in process for a year, two years? Is that...
At least, Your Honor, and I think...
Thank you. I've got my wig and my robe in here, too.
The dynamic, they essentially, for lack of a better term, abandoned the property, stopped using it in 2017. So this has been in the process of disrepair and degradation. I think I use the term a dystopian property. That's been occurring there for many, many years.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So when we vote on this, that is absolute, that means there will be a fine, no more further cleanup, no more clean this up by, how does that work?
What we are, what I'm requesting is that the hearing office decision be affirmed, including the fine, and authorizing the Penale County Attorney's Office to take all necessary action going forward, including a Superior Court action to reduce the fine to a judgment so we can actually levy against the property this particular fine, to make sure it gets paid. We also, going forward, would ask for equitable relief, being the authority to go on the property, clean it ourselves at our cost, and then place additional liens for that cost against the property. If they do continue to clean it and get it resolved, that obviates the need for that type of equitable result.
Okay. All right, this is, no further comment. We don't need to hear from the hearing officer or the appellant. So I'll ask for a...
Chair.
Is it proper to allow the person to respond? So, yes. So is, would the appellant like to comment?
Yes, sir. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. This is Glenn McMinn. I was here before you three months ago, and you gave us the opportunity to get the place cleaned up. To date, Mr. Alvarez, Ben Alvarez and Sons, the buyer, they have spent about $15,000 so far. They've hauled away about eight dump truck loads of debris. They've been trimming trees, mulching things up, but there is a lot of work to do. And I don't, I disagree with Mr. Cameron about, about a portion of the fines. There is one item, there were, there were three violations, and one of them had to do with travel trailers. And I thought we established on our last go-around that, and, and this was my, my main reason for appeal is that there weren't people living there, and that, and that was a violation. But I mean, they were old trailers. They've been, they're not there anymore. They're, you know, they're being removed. One of them, I think they just opted to crush it and haul it off. But anyway, I'm not, I don't want to continue to cause you guys a lot more grief. I have a proposal for you. Two of the violations, the $1,500, I don't, I don't disagree with paying that. I mean, they've already spent 15 grand, you know, just to get it to this state right here. And then to give the, you know, to give the county a hammer to, to make sure that we continue to proceed if you guys want to impose. Initially, when this fine was levied, there was gonna, is, we had an option to do like a $250 a month payment plan to pay it off. You know, we'll, we'll pay the $1,500 right now and say, you know, for, for every month afterwards, if you guys want to levy something against us to give a hammer. You know, I, I don't, I don't disagree with what Mr. Cameron, I don't disagree with him. We have, there's still a lot of work to do out there, and, and so, you know, we have to bear our burdens. So anyway, I appreciate you guys indulging me, and I don't, we, I don't want to waste the county's time, but thank you.
Anyone have any questions? I would ask Mr. Cameron, the, the question of the travel trailers, is that still included in the, in the fine? Or is that, does it change anything that that was, that that was taken?
It doesn't change anything, Your Honor. The, the travel trailers, the storage, I think he's recognized that he's had a number of them.
Step up to the mic. Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
And I think the, the record, the transcript at the hearing office was fairly clear that there were a number of travel trailers there, that people had stored them on the property. He recognized that they had gotten long and toothed as a storage facility for those trailers. So no, it doesn't change anything.
Okay. Any questions for either of these gentlemen? Okay, thank you. If not, then I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, are we voting on nine, 10, and 11 together?
And do we have to do that separate?
One, one item at a time.
Okay, this is item number nine. Yes.
I would make a motion to... I'm not sure exactly what I'm trying to motion here. The special counsel recommendation moved, no, not item nine, okay. See, I step away for a couple of weeks and don't know what to...
Better to take her time and do it right, so.
I move that we affirm and hold the decision of the hearing officer on item nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion on number 10? And this is...
We have to hear number, number 10. We just have special counsel at the dais for items nine, 10, 11.
Okay.
But we have to hear each.
So number nine is over. So, and this is regarding Russell Weber, and we're asked to go into executive session on this?
That is correct, after the presentation.
After the presentation, so please, please present.
Is Mr. Weber present? Members of the board, chairman, county manager, Craig Cameron, on behalf of the Penale County Attorney's Office, representing the Code Compliance Office. The first issue that I wanted to address is I did file a motion to strike the appeal in this particular matter. And it goes to the nature of what Mr. Weber and how he appealed. Mr. Weber's here. The hearing office rules are fairly specific that they have to identify an issue on appeal, meaning that the hearing officer made a incorrect decision. They accepted evidence that they shouldn't have accepted. They refused evidence that they should have accepted. They misinterpreted the, the hearing or the code rules in some regard. That's not what has taken place in this particular matter. He wants more time. He demonstrates what needs to be done to clean up. We appreciate that. However, that's not a issue for appeal. The second issue on the motion to strike is, in this matter, there was an affidavit accepted by the clerk of the board. This is a subsequent evidence witness type item. That's not permitted. Mr. Weber, in his process of filing the appeal, did not identify any spokesperson for him or attorney. So therefore, this new person, this new affidavit, who, the person who filed the affidavit, is not a recognized representative. This should not have been accepted. So that affidavit also should be stricken and removed from the record. It's not a proper part of the record. However, again, what it goes through is, gosh, Mr. Weber has been working on this piece of property for a long time. And he's, and I've seen him make progress. We appreciate him making progress, but that's not an issue on appeal. So I'm moving to strike the appeal for failing to identify where the hearing office made a mistake. It's a procedural type of a, a motion. I know in the past, I've moved to strike based upon jurisdiction. This is not a jurisdictional motion to strike. You do have jurisdiction to hear the motion to strike and then make your decision and then go forward. Certainly, he has a right to appeal, but he has a right on that appeal to identify. He's required to say where the hearing officer made the mistake.
You, you stated he's been working on this a long time. Do you have a timeline from when to when and how much, and progress?
This is the fourth time a case has been opened by the Code Compliance Office regarding this piece of property. So it is multiple years.
Years.
And it's truly a ongoing process. If you would go on MapQuest and go to the street view, and you stood in the middle of the street in front of Mr. Weber's property, you couldn't see his property because there's a school bus, a broken-down school bus, full-size, yellow, that's been sitting in front of his property for many, many months. We don't have jurisdiction over the roadway or for motor vehicles. Otherwise, we would have included that. He's got a lot of projects. Unfortunately, these projects have been going on and on for a long time.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Cameron? If not, we can hear from Mr. Weber and perhaps help him with the mic. Mr. Weber, would you like to?
Well, first off, is the last, the school bus is operable, and I move it and start it, keep the battery charged and all. I don't know how that's an issue. And the complaints, the two complaints, I didn't realize when we were here in October the 13th that the issues that were brought up had already been resolved. And I put in, in my appeal, a letter from my neighbor, Stephanie Danielson, notedized a letter, saying that the work is in progress, and she sees me working on it, 30 hours every day, just about. And the two pictures that I put in the end of the photographs that I submitted, one of the north gate, I saw the hearing officer take that photograph. From that standpoint, she did not submit it. And also, she took a picture of the front yard, the front porch, which I think that was in the first part of the cleanup. In the elimination, in not submitting those photographs, I saw her take, that I made another photograph. From that standpoint, kind of indicates that she was omitting pertinent photographs that were pertinent to the case. In other words, it had already been taken care of. And the appliances that are mentioned in the complaints, they had been removed. The only appliances that are still there, she didn't even notice. I had a collection of home entertainment devices, VCRs, VHSs, and whatnot that I'm removing in progress, disassembling them and taking them to salvage. There's maybe a half a dozen pallets left that I haven't disposed of. Thank you. And so, the main issue is, is when we were here, October the 13th, that the complaints that were submitted, I didn't object to then because I didn't realize what she was saying. My hearing isn't that good, and I wasn't reading, nevertheless, it had already been taken care of. And the yard, backyard and the front yard are just about taken care of. There was a big problem. I have a very large mesquite tree that's been trimmed back so that it's balanced, so that I can do further trimming. And it mentioned an illegal multi-level structure that is no longer, it's downed at like eight feet by 10 feet. So, the bottom line is, is that at the time of the hearing, October the 13th, Mr. Wright's complaints had already been taken care of in the majority of the main issues, the appliances and itsiles. And also, let me add that the school bus is operable, and I start it once a week, and I move it. Stephanie Danielson, in her letter that she submitted, but the photographs pretty much point out the fact that I'm working on it continuously. And I guess that's about all I can say. I live on social security, I have a fixed income, and I spend my time, a lot of my time continuing to get my property so that I can sell it.
Are there any questions for Mr. Weber?
I have one.
Okay.
Mr. Weber, you heard Mr. Cameron state that you didn't file in your written response, in your appeal, any items that would allow an appeal to occur. Do you remember what Mr. Cameron said?
I'm sorry, I.
So, I'll speak into the microphone. Mr. Cameron said that with, for an appeal, it has to be very specific. You have to write certain items in the appeal, other than the description, and you didn't, you didn't do that. And what I've heard is today is you didn't state any of those reasons either.
I didn't.
You didn't speak any of those items either. So, we haven't heard a reason to vote with you on your appeal.
You don't understand the question.
No. So, I have nothing else, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Goodman?
I guess this is more of a question to staff and to.
Can I check something here?
Yeah, go ahead.
I have, with the assistance that I've had from B Connected, with the veterans organizations, I've searched days with their assistance, trying to get some legal representation to give me some assistance, and I haven't found any legal assistance available. And I'm not a lawyer, and needed to decipher the legal jargon that is seemingly, on occasion, inavocable. And the code of compliance officer used, well, she used descriptive nouns in the complaint that had already been taken care of, and then left a generic statement of the complaint. And I think the complaint is really invalid. In other words, it had already been resolved before October the 13th, when he came to the hearing. And that's kind of the reason that I appealed. And also, I have only limited income, and $1,500 seems a little steep.
Mr. Goodman?
Thank you. If I could just ask Cameron or anybody from our staff, for that matter, in regards to Mr. Weber's situation, I know there's a lot of individuals out there that can't afford an attorney or even get an explanation of how you fill out those forms, and do we offer that type of services to individuals that come in? Or is that something that we're kind of prohibited from? Is there a branch that we can send them to, or?
There's probably Southern Arizona Legal Aid may be able to assist them. We do provide them with the forms and let them know the timeframe that is required for them to file an appeal. We can't advise them as to what we think would be a good point to appeal.
Okay.
Or to what's taking place, you know, as to, it's their choice of what they want to appeal.
Okay.
And what they think, how they've been wrong by the hearing office.
Okay. And maybe that's at the end of the, at the end of our meeting, when we have an item that we'd like to add or have a discussion about, maybe that's the proper place for me to bring that up and to talk about that, because I know we have a lot of individuals like Mr. Weber that are in all of our areas, that are on limited income, and that are living in these kind of conditions and things of that nature, and we just need to, I know that's the compassionate part of a lot of us on this board, as we look at these kind of situations, we're trying to, but at the same time, we're mandated to provide certain rulings and things of that nature. So, empathize with you. I think we find, what we're trying to do is find a way that we can best help you in the circumstances and get you in compliance, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think I have what would be considered a legal question, and I'm, I was wondering if we could go into exec session so I could ask counsel a specific.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion to go into executive session.
So, moved.
Second.
Second.
Can I make another comment? I've gone to those resources, and they turned me down because they, they're into filling out wills and stuff like that, and they turned me down because they considered it a criminal offense.
Okay. So, there's a motion and a second, and I believe we can discuss this again when we come out, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, we will be in executive session. Mr. Miller, your questions, did they get answered?
They did, but I'd like to address it.
Okay.
Into the public now. So, Mr. Attorney, does our, we vacate or we uphold the hearing officer's ruling and not allow for the appeal. You're going to, the county attorney's office will lien this gentleman's property for the levy of the fine. Will it also include a levy if we were to clean it and then include those dollars to the lien?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, we can move forward with this, and go ahead.
Back to the microphone, please.
This is somewhat of a bifurcated process. The first question is, should the appeal be dismissed, which includes striking the affidavit? And then, if you choose to allow the appeal to go forward, then we have the hearing on the appeal itself properly. You know, we haven't technically heard the appeal. We've heard the motion to dismiss the appeal.
Okay.
So, if you do dismiss the appeal, we then are in the position of allowing the county attorney to go forward with enforcing the hearing officer's decision.
Okay. So, the motion would be to dismiss the appeal?
Correct.
Okay.
And then.
Mr. Chairman, we have a motion in front of you all. It's a motion to strike, the motion to approve, moving to approve the motion to strike and upholding the hearing officer's, okay, decision.
Okay.
So, my motion would be, move to grant the motion to strike the appeal filed by the Pennell County Attorney's Office and affirm in whole the decision of the hearing officer.
That's, is that correct?
That's correct.
Did anyone want to discuss that before we made that motion?
Yeah, I do. Do we have the capability of dismissing, for instance, the fines or reducing those? Because I think they're, how much are they, Mr. Cameron?
$1,500.
$1,500, we've already heard. Do we have the capability to do that?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's an interesting question. Your zoning ordinance, the civil procedure penalties, the civil penalties under 216140 say that the fines shall not exceed $750 for an individual. It's an amount to be set by resolution of the board. So, the manner in which the fees were set by that resolution, if they were a not-to-exceed amount, the board has the authority to modify the fine, but that would also require that you not necessarily uphold. You would reduce the fine of the hearing officer. I can't tell you with any certainty that your resolution that adopted those fees, that civil penalty, is written in the not-to-exceed amount to allow you that flexibility. Your zoning code is, but we don't have the resolution to be able to tell if the resolution authorized by the zoning ordinance actually says the same thing. Going only on the zoning ordinance, I think you have that authority, but that's with the missing information that we don't have.
Okay. Okay. Now, would we want to make a motion?
I made the motion. We haven't had a second.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so, does that need any explanation, what we just?
If I, if I might, I'm going to vote aye, but I think that going forward, but I am going to vote aye on this one, but we ought to look at that as some of our.
Potential.
Yeah, potential. That's one of the reasons why I asked that, so, but I'm going to vote aye on this one.
Okay, and it did pass, so.
Thank you.
Item number 11. Chris Keller will return. Yes. Presenter would be Thaddeus Garlick.
This is hearing review and appeal of decision Z 022-0060, State of Yvette Cook.
Good morning, Chairman and Supervisors. My name's Thaddeus Garlick. I'm appearing on behalf of Pennell County and the Code Enforcement Division. I am asking the Board of Supervisors to uphold the hearing officer's decision as in full with the fines. There is no reason for the, for this appeal. This kind of, kind of map out and kind of give you some background on this. The initial site inspection occurred back in July of 2018. So, this matter has been progressing for the last four years with very little progress. During this time period, during the last four years, the Code Enforcement Office has done 13 inspections of the site, has had four telephone conversations with the homeowner and the renter of the property, and has had four in-person meetings with these individuals to get the site in compliance. Unfortunately, the site's still out of compliance, so, and the hearing officer, when he made his decision at that time, found that the site was still out of compliance and assessed two counts of a fine for outdoor, well, for, you know, multiple inoperable unregistered vehicles on the property, and also for a second violation for basically miscellaneous debris, broken down appliances, tires, scrap metal, you know, trailers full of trash on the property being stored. Could you pull up the pictures? So, you can see from the photo up. All right, so you can see from the the photo up above, it's kind of small, but you see the photo up above, there was debris on the side of the property, on the rear of the property in initial visit. Can you advance to the next ones? Then the next one? And these pictures here are basically right before the hearing. You can see that they did make some progress in clearing the debris off of the east side of the property. However, it appears that most of the debris on the east side of the property was moved to the rear of the property. And then you can see underneath the underneath the carport, there's broken appliances, just miscellaneous debris and different, you know, different scrap metal. So there hasn't been any progress on so on the property. There I believe, I know, well, the the hearing officer didn't make any errors in basically in rendering his decision on the two violations. The homeowner of the property at the time of the hearing even admitted that the property was out of compliance. So I ask that the the Board of Supervisors affirm the hearing officer's determinations.
Any questions? My usual question is, what's the timeline? When did this all start? How many?
Two thousand and eighteen is when the initial site visit took place, and then the courtesy letter was sent out that same month, and then it progressed from there. Like I stated earlier, there's been thirteen different site visits, you know, there's been in-person calling and also in-person meetings with the property owner and the renter of the property.
So it's going on five years.
Correct.
Once more, are there any questions? Is the representative here for Ms. Cook?
No, Chairman. Ms. Cook actually submitted a letter regarding her conflict with the hearing date.
One more time, any questions? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we affirm the decision of the hearing officer on item eleven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there is a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now Chris Keller will return. Item twelve, discussion, approval, disapproval of a lease agreement with Pinellas County and Singular Wireless. And Albert Stanley present.
Good morning, almost almost afternoon. This is a Public Works lease between AT&amp;T and Pinellas County. This is at the Resolution Copper Mine. Essentially, what this is, is AT&amp;T would like to use a portion of our tower to push out the FirstNet Band fourteen network. That's a public safety network. As this lease is written, it's only intended for that public safety band, so no commercial traffic for AT&amp;T will be on this tower. And essentially, we're Public Works, I should say, is leasing this portion of the IT radio tower to AT&amp;T. The amount is twenty-four hundred per month, two percent annual increase. Again, this is also subject to third-party approval by Resolution Copper Mine. So our portion of this approval is also subject to a secondary approval from the mine themselves. Okay, so that's just how this lease was written. The revenue would be going to the Public Works Department. The appropriation is a prorated amount of sixteen thousand eight hundred for the rest of the fiscal year, and this item said that it required unanimous consent from the board. And I have members from AT&amp;T here, I have members from Public Works here, I have staff from IT here, so any questions we you guys have, we should hopefully be able to answer them for you.
Are there any questions, Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just real quick, has there been any communications with Resolution Copper? Have you heard of any issues they may have?
We have been in contact with them. It has been posted on their property as well, this lease required posting, so that has been posted. You guys want to mention anything about your communications with Resolution Copper?
Good morning, Ken Lyons here on behalf of AT&amp;T through the Chairman to Supervisor Miller. Yes, we've been in contact with Resolution Copper Mine as well as the county IT staff requesting the consent process occur, and generally, they don't have any concerns with it. They certainly would like to see service be improved out there. We're still waiting for them to running through their approval chain. So following the Board of Supervisor action on this particular lease, it would, again, be subject to their approval, which is a requirement of the county's original lease with with Resolution Copper Mine. Thank you.
To your knowledge, you've had no downside conversations with Resolution Copper?
I have not had any downside.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
In the big picture, does this help more than just public safety? Does it increase broadband communications for others?
As it is leased right now, no. This is strictly to enhance our public safety network in that area that is lacking. We do essentially have a dead zone out there, which has been expressed by PCSO and AT&amp;T. They're trying to correct, essentially correct the issue as well as enhance the coverage for the rest of the country as part of a federal program.
So is it only PCSO, or does it Forest Service DPS, do they all benefit?
Correct. Any first responder that is on the FirstNet network will have access to this tower. So it's not just PCSO, it's any first responder that can qualify for the FirstNet network band, including some of our staff, even on the IT department, for instance. We do qualify for FirstNet. There's also other members of Pinellas County that also qualify for FirstNet coverage.
Any more questions? If not, I'll ask for a motion. Do we need a roll call on this?
No, Chairman, but there is a presentation on this particular item.
Okay, let's.
Okay, they were gonna hold the presentation unless it was needed, but if you guys want to see it, I'll have them present it.
Do we want to see it? I'm seeing no. We're saying no.
Okay.
Very boring.
We trust you. We trust you.
So I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number twelve as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is unanimous. No need for a roll call. Item number thirteen, approval, disapproval of an agreement with ADOT, Joe Ortiz.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Board of Supervisors, Joe Ortiz, Pinellas County Public Works Deputy Director. Yes, as you mentioned, this is a request for a First Amendment between Pinellas County as a leasor and the state of Arizona, acting through the Department of Transportation Administrative Services Division as the leasing motor vehicle department, basically. Cut through the red tape, that's who this is. So this is a monthly base rental increase to three thousand three, three thousand thirty-seven dollars and eighty cents with a yearly increase based on CPI index. This is located at five seven five North Idaho Road, Suite six hundred, Apache Junction, Arizona. The acceptance also requires an amendment to the fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three budget to transfer service reserve appropriations to Fund two thirteen Grants and Project Contingency to Fund ten, which is General Fund Public Works. This is to increase revenue in expenditure appropriations. The appropriation is a prorated amount of twenty-one thousand two hundred sixty-five dollars for this current fiscal year. The remaining amount will be budgeted in fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four. With that, I can't answer any questions.
How often does this get brought up?
The question of, well, it's a year, it's a yearly basis lease.
And this borders our maintenance yard as well. There's also, just since my office is there, there's a snow fence or a chain link fence that was pretty ugly that borders this, and that everybody that goes to there sees that. Is there any plan on upgrading that a little?
Yeah, we had conversations with Facilities Maintenance on potentially putting them block it, because everything else around our yard is blocked except for that leg, for whatever reason. I think it's just a matter of trying to find the funding to make it happen. I think Facilities is okay with it now.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve item number, where are we at, thirteen as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is unanimous.
Thank you.
Item number fourteen, approval, disapproval of a uniform video license agreement with Mrs. Megan.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Megan Viegas with Public Works. I'm purpose this agenda item is to request a vote from the Board of Supervisors on a uniform video license agreement between Pinellas County and H-WAS for the use of our right-of-way. So in Statute forty-two fifty-one, the county is authorized to regulate and manage the public right-of-ways within its jurisdiction, so we're requesting approval of the uniform video license agreement between Pinellas County and H-WAS for the use of our right-of-ways for their fiber optic lines. I do also have two representatives from the company here, in case you have any questions.
Are there any questions? I don't see any. If no questions, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion to approve item number fourteen as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is passes. Okay, discussion for future agenda items.
More on fifteen.
Fifteen, way down, okay. Discussion approval, disapproval, customer service position at the Mammoth office, and this is kind of a shared office, there's several different districts overlap down there, so maybe explain how that would all work.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Brent Billingsley, Community Development. The Community Development Department was provided an interesting opportunity to succeed a couple months ago. We got a request from the County Manager's Office due to the redistricting that occurred countywide. There used to be an office that was open and available in the Mammoth area that was no longer going to be open and had actually been closed. I was approached by the County Manager's Office, and they said, look, we're getting a lot of outreach from folks that live in that area that have some essential services that they've always received assistance with. That needs to continue. Can you help us out and come up with a plan on how we can provide staffing in that office? We immediately went to work and came up with a plan to staff the office, outfit the office, and to be able to provide services, which we provide two days a week on Tuesdays and Thursdays at that location. The intent at the time was to have an additional staff member in the customer service role to be able to make sure we have enough staffing to to operate our front offices as well as go up there two days a week. We needed to to make sure that we got far enough through the budget session or the budget season, if you will, to where we had some cost savings so that we could allocate some funds to be able to hire an additional position. So this is to hire that additional position. We currently have four customer service representatives, and then they have alternating schedules because of the nine-eighty schedule. So that puts us in a situation where ordinarily, we have three people in the office, sometimes we only have two people in the office, but if we send somebody to Mammoth, we could be in a position where we have one customer service person or two customer service persons on those Tuesdays and Thursdays. So the item in front of you today is to do essentially a budget amendment to allow us to use departmental cost savings to hire an additional customer service person to provide services to those residents.
So for those residents that might watch this online, what what all can be done there? And where do you envision, I mean, all the way from Superior Kearney, Oracle, all those folks could, this would be in their orbit, they would save them a trip all the way up here to Florence, correct?
That's true. Typically, we're getting folks from the Winkleman area, obviously Mammoth, Oracle, San Manuel. The services offered are online permitting and payments with assistance from a staff person, burn permits, online tax information and payments, dump vouchers, which is the primary demand in that office, records requests for the for the county, and assisting with with phone calls that come in from the public that ask various questions about the county. So we've had to take a couple of our existing customer service folks and train them in other departments, services provided by other departments, so that they can provide those services and provide advice in that office on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
On those Tuesdays and Thursdays, do those the staff have to report up here and then drive down there, or can they just go straight there?
Yes, sir. Staff reports to this office and then drives to Mammoth and then drives back by close of business to to finish up their reporting.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, a question.
Yes.
In that office, will this be an additional person?
No, sir. This would just allow us to, we have a designated individual that serves those two days in that office, and then they'll assist us with customer service here in Florence the remaining three days of the week.
Thank you.
Just some interesting statistics. Since we opened the office, which was in September, we've helped a total of three hundred and fifty-eight customers. We've issued two hundred and seventy-eight dump vouchers, fifty-eight burn permits, helped people process thirteen applications and permits through Community Development, have assisted thirty-one folks with questions regarding the treasurer's office and eight other requests that went to the Board of Supervisors' individual offices regarding questions.
Okay, any more questions, Mr. Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The the description talks about, I think it's the new position request form, maintain a database by entering client under other patient confidential information. Is there a a health component to this?
No, sir. I don't know why it sounds like there's a health component to it.
Okay, it's probably just they copied the.
I'm guessing they copied the form through the HR process, yeah.
Okay, and during the year, I think Josh can correct me if I'm wrong, we had about five thousand customer contacts down there, so I'm really happy that to see this office restaffed. Would you consider hiring someone from the area if it eliminated the commute?
Absolutely, absolutely. Our hope is that somebody from the area will apply.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And just for Mr. Chair, just out of clarification, that that position has been open for quite a while, and no one from the area has come in, or they're not qualified? Is that?
Well, there was, it's interesting that you ask that question, because I was under the understanding that there was budget to hire this position about the time we made the transition. We actually advertised for the position, then I found out after the fact that the money was was never transferred over to do that, so that's why we're in the position we are here now. Angie is here. We have hired for a customer service person, not for this office, but in our office. Have we gotten any applications from folks in the area for the positions we filled? Not even one is our answer for the record.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Mr. Kavanaugh?
Just a recommendation. It was difficult finding folks down there, and folks don't go to the website, so maybe get with me and I'll, I can help guide where to put the information out, you might be able to fish in a better pond.
Will do.
Okay. If no further questions, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number fifteen as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's unanimous. Now I will ask for any future agenda items, and I have a couple, but I'll let you guys go first. I think you were gonna ask.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the. One of the, I think, there was a couple of them. One of them has to do with the, the Hearing Officer, the, one of the hearings, I had a question in regards to what are some of our limitations, especially from the Attorney's Office. Do we have, I know, for instance, at the Corporation Commission, there's a branch of the Corporation Commission called RUCO. And RUCO's design is nothing but representing the consumer and helping the consumer navigate through some of the issues and everything, the complexity of, of everything that goes on there. And I wonder if there's anything that we could do here at the county to help our constituents navigate through and stay within the rules and the regulations that we have. So I'd like to know whether or not that's possible. And then the second thing is, 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 I know Supervisor Miller had asked for a work session back last year, which was, what, four to five days ago? But anyway, in that request was a work session or a strategy session that the discussion is more on the type of, for instance, we've, we've turned down a solar power plant, you know, or to feed our grid, and maybe have an open discussion, we as a whole, as to some of the things and concerns that we have, especially with some of the shortages that we're going to have when it comes to electric, being able to generate electricity with the shutting down of coal, coal power plants and stuff like that. And then the recent denial that the corporation gave on, on the expansion of the gas plant there in, in Randolph. It, we really ought to have an open discussion about that. And I know Supervisor, our Chairman Sertie talked about, a little bit about the roads and infrastructure. And I think we really need to have a straightforward discussion, and, and more of this is to help give direction to our staff. I think if our staff had a better feel for what our strategy, you know, what our goals and objectives are as a whole. So that needs to be done. Because, you know, we're looking at the road infrastructure, we're looking at some of the retail leakages that, in certain areas that we have, that, how are we going to address that? And, and things of that nature. So I think an overall strategic plan session for all of us, including some of our key individuals and our staff, so that they can get a feel for where we're coming from. For instance, we've got apartment complexes that are trying to come in, and, and commercial properties, and we're already limited on commercial properties in Pinell County, in, in my district. But I can only imagine it's probably countywide in certain areas. So we probably ought to have some pretty good discussions and start to come together on some strategic plans to move forward. And I'd see that's done sooner than later.
Okay. I have two election-related things that I would like to do in the form of work sessions, and there's no, no real sense of urgency on this. As of right now, our next election won't be till 2024 unless there's some kind of a special election. But one, before, three of us were on this board, the county recorder ran the elections. And a lot of the public still thinks that, and you could see the confusion this morning, how complicated it can be. I'd like to have a discussion of how in 2017 that happened, and now after it's been kind of experimental, or it's been in action for a couple of elections, is there some way that we might want to go back to some kind of a hybridized form of giving the recorder more responsibility or merging them together somehow, just to make it more efficient? Because when, like I said, all of these things that we're getting lumped in with Maricopa County, they all think that the recorder still does all this, and that's not how we're doing it. If nothing else, we can just have a discussion to clarify everything and to see if there's any room for employment, or improvement. So that would be how I would want to look at it. The other one is during this volatile election statewide, it came up that several boards of supervisors, that if they did not vote yes to certify these canvases, that they could literally be arrested and kicked off their board. And I would like, in the future, Kent Volkmer to explain that. Because we don't know, I mean, the last two elections have been kind of wonky. What if 2024 is even worse? And we're forced to say, vote yes on something that we don't want to vote yes on? And how would that go about being changed? Would that be something that the legislature would have to do? I don't think we can do it ourself. So I would like to have that discussion to, to try to avoid that. That's just a strange situation that got put into, into, into effect. So that, I would like to, those are my two I'd like to bring up. Mr. Kavanaugh.
The first one, as requested by former Pima County Supervisor Allee Miller, a legal discussion to consider recovery of the $25,000 bonus paid to Virginia Ross. Number two might go along with the meetings that the Chairman just mentioned, a schedule of meetings, given, scheduled special meetings, given more time to deal exclusively with both the primary and general elections in Pinell County, in which the board will have the authority to both subpoena witnesses and evidence and place persons under oath when giving testimony.
Okay. If nothing else, then I will adjourn the meeting.